Welcome, we're back from ESAS. We left off. Mr. Senator Tadegui. If we can have the panel come back? We have another session, sorry, there's another round. Okay, Senator Tadegui, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. And I wanted to thank everyone who came and testified. I don't know where Mr. Santos is right now, but, you know, I want him to realize that, you know, we're going to try and do what we can, but we have to keep in mind, once we contaminate our water system, there's gonna, nobody's going to be living anywhere on this island. We're already seeing an exodus right now, from 177,000 people down to 155. And you have to ask yourself why. I mean, let's not give any more excuses by, you know, not being, doing our due diligence and looking at total research, not just by our EPA, but WEary as well and other entities that's come in and testified. There is, though, a question I do have, Mr. Duennas. Duennas, and Happy New Year to you, sir.
Happy New Year to you.
In your testimony, on page one, you mentioned that Guam EPA is concerned that Section 7 of Bill 17537 will lead to a significant degradation of the quality of groundwater to somewhat distinguishes when the agency continues the enactment of laws limiting the development partial subdivision descended to state and agricultural subdivision in unsued areas within the GPZ. With a requirement that a type 4 system is to be used, but conventionally turns a blind eye to the fact that over 1,800 type 2 sewage disposal systems within the close proximity to a public sewer continue to discharge into our aquifers day in and day out. I'm sure you know the rest of it, so I have to ask you. You said 1,800 type 2 sewer disposal system. Where is this located at?
You mean the 1,800? The 1,800, they're scattered throughout northern Guam.
1,900?
1,800.
Yeah, it's 1,800, over 1,800, so.
Correct.
Yeah, where are these located at? Where is this located at?
A lot of them are located in Dedodo. They're scattered all over.
Oh, they're all over the place. And where did you get your data?
From the GWA study.
From the study?
Septic Tank Study in 2020.
Okay, so it's all over the island, you're saying? So everything from Chalampago to Dedodo to, you know, in Alahan?
Where, where, where the sewer systems are, from Chalampago, yes, up to Anderson, correct.
Do you happen to know how many of those are on the GPZ? Because if you're saying it's scattered.
All of them.
Okay, all of them. So even in the southern part of the island where it's not?
The southern part of the island is not part of the Guam Water Protection Zone.
Okay, so it's just all of them.
Actually, the GPZ has definite coordinates.
Okay.
I have that, Guam EPA has that.
Okay.
And it's mapped.
Okay.
There are parts of northern Guam that are not part of the GPZ, namely, the Baragota area, the lower part of Baragota, the mighty area where there's a wedge of saltwater intrusion all the way up there. We don't draw anything out of the aquifer there because it's salty. So that's not part of the groundwater protection zone. For example, we have a parcel up at Canata-Baragota that is not within the GPZ, and we were permitted to put in a type 2 system.
Okay, so I just wanted to verify that, where you got this information? Because I would really like to know why these individuals.
I can send you the GWA publication where I got it from.
Okay.
It's, I don't know, over 100 pages.
Well, I appreciate that. I think we'll look it up and find out why these individuals are not hooked up to a system, which is, I think, is required. So why are they not hooked up?
It was required at one time, right now, it's kind of required.
Yeah, kinda?
Yes, it's kind of required. I think if contamination of our groundwater is really our primary concern, the first thing we ought to do is hook up those units to the sewer system because the sewer system is right there.
Since they're right, real close to it.
So how do we get the money for that? That's, well, first of all, if you hook them all up, you're going to get the $22 a month. So that's going to pay for part of it. The other thing is, the property owners also bear some responsibility to hook up.
Right.
So a combination of government, I think it takes, it's going to take a hero here, the senators here, to actually craft a program to be able to get this done. So far, people have been saying, "It's too complicated, it's costly, we don't know what's going to happen." But in the meantime, by the way, these village streets, and a lot of them are in our villages, are being paved. Now, what's the connection? Well, if you pave a new street and you're going to hook up to the sewer, what are you going to do? You're going to cut through the new pavement to hook up. So there are a lot of, what would you call that, unintended consequences for not doing the hookup today.
Okay, well, I thank you so much, and I alert my chairman of the committee on this particular situation, because they should be hooked up. You're absolutely right. Again, I thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Madam Chair, I leave it to you.
Senator Tadegui, I'm going to leave this report for you, because this is the report that GWA commissioned. And it's actually, 3,520 are within 200 feet of a sewer main, and they're not connected, and it tells you what villages. And then there's a map that shows you which properties.
But is that in the GPZ zone?
And then within 50 feet of a sewer main, it's 2,471. And I'll leave this report so that you can take a look at it.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. I think, thank you, Gina, for that. But, you know, I'm looking at, those are especially under the GPZ that was mentioned in Mr. Duennas's.
That's what this report was for, the properties over.
Right, and he's saying there's only 1,800. But now you're saying there's 2,000?
That's what the report says.
Within 200, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, I'll take that and appreciate the report.
If you read the full report, it's actually 1,800.
Press the button. If you read, can you repeat that again?
If you read the report, it's going to tell you there's 1,886 units at the time the study was done that can connect to sewer today.
Thank you so much for that research. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. So we have, I believe, one more panel online, on Zoom. So I'll be calling them, and according to the signup sheet, we have Dorothea Santos Poe. You're recognized. Are you on Zoom right now, Dorothea? If you can unmute yourself. I can't see.
Okay.
Okay, I think you're still on mute, if you can unmute yourself.
I am unmuted.
You're still muted.
Am I still unmuted?
Now you're, now we can hear you. But if you can speak a little louder, I appreciate that, thank you. So you're recognized.
Thank you. Hello, Senator Perez, and thank you for allowing me to speak today in favor of Bill 17537. Hello to Senator Duennas, Senator Blas, Senators Lujan, Senator Fisher, Senator Sinicalis, and all the other senators that are here today. Thank you to the panel who came and spoke and gave us a lot of good information, their expertise, and all the time and effort that they put into this. My name is Dorothea Santos Poe, and I am one of the landowners that I've been affected to my detriment without the passing of this bill. I live stateside, and it is prohibitive for me and my family to build a home on the land that I already own. Our only solution would be the passage, after today's discussions, that you will support this bill. I would like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to Guam EPA, specifically Captain Brian Bearden and Michelle Lastimosa, all of the co-sponsoring senators and the stakeholders who have worked tirelessly on this bill that is before you today. Captain Bearden, you brought forth a solution as a remedy for our prolonged ordeal when attempting to obtain building permits. The solution was to, is to add decedent estate to the current parental subdivision language in addition to the use of a nitrogen-reducing system type 4. Thank you for your great input and a solution to the problem. A nitrate, the nitrate-reducing system has been used there in Guam for several years. It's a proven technology that has been approved and successfully used on the island. For almost two decades, our family had no options or recourse in pursuit of building a home on a property gifted to us from our deceased parents. Our brother John Santos there, before you, was the executor of our parents' estate. Although he performed all the duties within the confines of Guam's laws, rules, and regulations, our predicament continues to date. During the process of preparing our property to subdivide, the surveyors found that government of Guam had installed the public road ingress on our property, along with the utility poles and the lines. This encroachment would be costly for the government to remove, relocate, reinstall, as well as cause a disturbance, delay, and hold up traffic for the residents within the neighborhood. So instead, my brother worked with all the government departments to leave the encroachment as is and then return to a land exchange, causing our property to be smaller. This issue, along with other obstacles, which warranted the involvement of other agencies, such as AG, DLM, GEPA, DPR, DPW, and probably some other agencies, forgetting the commissioners. This is such a, this was such an arduous journey for my brother, and it still is. And in spite of working successfully with GovGuam to complete the land exchange, we were still denied building permits because of the current estate subdivision language. During this process, our family suffered the loss of three brothers who will never enjoy or see the land subdivided from our parents. Bill 175-37, pardon me, will define our court-ordered decedent estate to be similarly defined as that of the parental subdivision language of Guam's law. This inclusion is significant and will allow our family to finally build homes. This day has been a long time coming. The long and much-needed time by the senators, GEPA, and stakeholders to iron out details for this bill has not gone unnoticed. I have high hopes that our senators, along with GEPA and the other government departments, will finalize something and pass Bill 175-37COR. Situism, maasi. Thank you, Senator Perez.
Situism, maasi, Dorothea. Thank you for your testimony and heartfelt condolences. Next, we have, on the list is Olivia Santos Anderson. Is Olivia present?
Yes, she is.
Okay, so Olivia, if we can.
She's on mute.
If you can unmute yourself, and if we can get a bigger screen. Yeah, I believe you're still on mute. Olivia, if you can raise your hand so we can see who. Okay, hi. Yeah, you're still on mute. Oh, that's Annie Santos. Okay, well, we'll go ahead and accept your testimony. If you can just state your name. Okay, you're still on mute.
She's still on mute.
Okay. Yeah, we don't hear you yet. I don't know if you, if you're reading, we can't see your lips at this point.
Hi, sorry, can we please unmute Ms. Olivia? She's having technical difficulties.
Olivia, can you raise your hand? Okay, I believe we heard you, so we can speak, increase the volume.
She needs to unmute on her end.
She's on mute?
Hi, Senator Duennas, we're seeking assistance for Ms. Olivia Anderson. She's having technical issues. If the committee could please help unmute her?
I'm on mute. It's on her end.
Yeah, it's on her end.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sorry, we keep getting a notification that you guys are trying to unmute Senator Duennas's profile. If we could stay muted and just unmute.
So Olivia, if you don't mind, I guess the information I'm getting is that you have to unmute yourself. We can't unmute you from remotely. If you like, I think sometimes if you reboot, it can, it may be one of those things. All right. Yeah, you're still muted, unfortunately. Would you like to reboot and come back in? And then maybe that might do the trick? Okay. I guess if you don't mind, we can continue with the next person. Who do we have online? We, the next one is Jesse Santos Anderson. No, Christine Attila. If you can raise your hand, if I say your name, if you can raise your hand. Timothy Poe. Oh, sorry, Christine Attila. Okay, so we can recognize you while we're waiting for Olivia. Okay, so if you can unmute yourself. Christine? You're recognized, if you want to unmute yourself. I could still see them muted. Okay, there you go. You're recognized.
Okay. I guess, the property, I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, who is the beneficiary of the land. And so, I guess, just listening through the testimony, again, I don't know too much of the details. And I believe that being able to have, you know, my mother and the rest of her siblings build on their property, or do whatever it is that they want to their property, I think a resolution is to be able to allow them to build with the type 4 system that you guys have spoken of. And also, I think it's been said that there are pollutions happening currently, as well as the nitrates going through the current system that they have, and 11 million dollars sitting in a bank account being idled. I think that somebody should hold their feet to the fire. I think it was GWA that was mentioned, to mitigate those issues that are happening. But again, I think all the legislature and all the authorities, the bill, to have this moved forward, it's been such a long, costly process for this to happen, subdivision. And I think my mom's family has made concessions as far as, you know, trading off some of the land and also being able to reduce their land because of the government, the roads that were built on it. And so, just to get in closing, if you would consider passing this law and to where, I guess, I want it to make sense what difference would it make to have either quarter acre or half acre? And to be a parental, a parental versus descend into a court order where, you know, the resolution can be installing one of those type 4 apparatuses, I guess, to mitigate some of those nitrate issues or pollution issues. Thank you.
Situism, maasi, Christine, thank you for your patience. Next, we have, is Olivia back up? Okay. The next one on the list is Bern Santos. If you can raise your hand so we know if you're there. Okay, you're there, okay. So if you can unmute yourself, you're recognized, Bern. Okay, you're still muted. Yeah, I still see the mute icon. Okay, if you can try to unmute yourself. Okay, the mute, you're still muted. Bern, yeah, you're still muted. Is AV helping to troubleshoot? Possible solutions? Or at least give her some sort of tips? So we, as we try to troubleshoot, maybe we can call the next person. Lisa Madrigal? Is that you? If you can raise your hand. Lisa? Rebecca Elaine Clayton? If you can raise your hand. Okay, there's no Frank. Madonna Lynn Santos? Can't read the, what's up there. Terracida Santos? I only see a portion of whoever's in the bottom screenshot. I don't know if you're there to provide testimony. If you can unmute yourself when I call you. There is Lorraine Donnell. Lorraine? Jordan Clayton? Okay, these are guys. Annie Santos? Oh, Annie, Annie, that's Annie? Okay. Can't see it. So Annie, if you can unmute yourself. So Bern, we'll wait for, to see if you can unmute at some point. But I would like to recognize Annie for her testimony. If you can unmute yourself at this point, you're recognized Annie. Elaine? Okay. Elaine? Elaine Santos, if you can unmute yourself? You're recognized? Yeah, we can't see your face, so if you can provide some lighting. Elaine, you did unmute yourself, but we don't see you. Okay, Elaine dropped out? Okay, is there anybody else on Zoom?
Michael Stidham.
Okay, Michael Stidham?
Hello, how are you?
If we can get a view of him. Michael, if you hear me, if you can unmute yourself as well.
He's present with no video.
Yeah, I'm present.
He has no video.
I do have audio.
No video. Mr. Michael, we're gonna need your video to be switched on.
I do turn it on for you. There you are. Good afternoon. I've been very patient listening to you all. I'm actually in North Carolina, United States here. I'm very involved with these type four systems that you're speaking about. The NSF 245 that you speak of is, is a great standard for reducing nitrates. But if you look at the definition of what they define 50% reduction in the nitrogen here. Total nitrogen is composed of, you know, your ammonia, nitrates, nitrates, and organic nitrogen. So we have to be careful when we look at these reports that you guys are looking at. You could very well do 50% nitrogen reduction, but you're very concerned about the nitrates. The nitrates are what we're concerned about in our groundwater source. And a lot of the testimony there today was speaking of, okay, we separate a half acre lot from one house to two houses, and that's going to increase our loading of the nitrates. Our responsibility is to get the nitrates below 10 milligrams per liter. By doing that, are we meeting the standard? Are we meeting what we want for our groundwater standard? Absolutely. It's not increasing the nitrates. We're keeping the nitrates down below a level, whether it's one house, two house, or 10 houses. As long as that nitrate level stays below 10, it's not increasing your nitrate loading for your groundwater supply. I've been a manufacturer for 24 years of these type systems in states. And there are a lot of us that have these, these products. But really, an education is everything. And we keep talking about we need to hook to the sewer. And we employ a lot of different types of systems here in the states. And it, it's very easy to follow the decentralized concept of the EPA where we don't necessarily need, you know, each house having a system. And especially when you start talking about these parental places, they could all be put on one independent system, reducing the maintenance cost, reducing the infrastructure cost, reducing the infrastructure cost of, of, of hooking to a centralized sewer system where the decentralized concept with cluster systems and such, where you have multiple houses. A, a good example right now in North Carolina, you know, I'm, I'm installing an 80,000 gallon AR RV part. You know, it's on one decentralized system. It's a smaller scope of centralized. But the amount of money you save in your infrastructure cost offsets the cost of that decentralized or clustered system. The management of that system becomes somewhat, a little bit more misfocused, whether it's a single proprietor of that system or it's a utility such as the water utility that you have there owning that system and again, charging that fee. But you don't have to burden yourself with that huge gravity infiltration system on these lift stations that you still see where you have what we call INE infiltration and exfiltration. So I think that you guys are really on the right track of instituting a plan to reduce the nitrates. I think you need to look into the standard a little bit more and make sure that you're, you're focusing on the nitrates. You're not going to get rid of the organic nitrogen. And in the nitrogen process here, what we have with the basic septic system with the septic tank and a leach field, when a septic tank disperses its affluent, your nitrate level coming out of that septic tank is, you know, usually around like one, maybe two milligrams per liter. What happens in the nitrification process is once that affluent comes out of there, your big constituent is really TKN, which is basically ammonia. And in the treatment component of the soils, that ammonia, as it's aerated and if there's a proper source of alkalinity, is going to convert to a nitrate. That's where the problem comes from a conventional system. If there's not proper carbon and oxygen below that conversion process, then it stays in that nitrate stage and penetrates the ground into your groundwater supply. So these type four systems that you speak of, what they do is basically recirculate that nitrified water where you've converted the ammonia to nitrates back to a carbonaceous state, which would be the septic tank or the trash tank in these systems that will give it the proper carbon and oxygen so it can release that nitrate into a gaseous state. And what happens is most of these systems out there only go halfway through the process of converting the ammonia to nitrates. And that 245 standard, this type four system, you know, if they don't complete the process, yes, it appears they did 50% reduction of total nitrogen. But we're not concerned, concerned about the total nitrogen. We're very concerned about the nitrate. So the process has to be completed. And when you look at these, approving these systems, you really need to dig into these NSF 245 reports and look at the data and extrapolate the data and separate it from, you know, what they're calling total nitrogen and look at the nitrate levels that they're able to perform. And it is something that has to be maintained. It is something that has to be periodically tested. The water can appear to be clear water out of these machines, very much so. But that, you can't see nitrate in the water. You can see turbidity. You can see the biological oxygen demand, BOD, and suspended solids with the clarity of the water. But you still have the issue of what's affecting our groundwater. And I don't mean to be on my soapbox. I just don't think that, that's really clear in what you're saying here and what you want to head towards. It, it is the elimination of that nitrate. And our goal for our groundwater source, the 1972 Clean Water Act strictly says right in there, less than 10 total nitrate, or total, excuse me, less than 10 nitrate for our groundwater protection agency. And if you look at the rule processes that are going on in the other states right now, I, I am on the advisory committee for Arizona right now, seven task committees to get through this. And we're refocusing because we've been so concerned about total nitrogen. And even in their definitions and their APP rules, it states right in there from 2005, nitrate, the 10 nitrate. You look at the reuse and the reclaimed water of different state approvals. And again, it's less than 10 nitrate. It's not the total nitrogen. So I, I caution you all in the fact that right now, it, it's very hard to get back into these rulemaking processes. It's really hard to get back into a legislative structure once you make this decision that you're doing without really specifying what it is that you're looking for in here. It's going to be another 10 or 15 years before you get another crack at this. It would be a waste of, of really good due diligence on your part to look a little bit further into how you structure this so that you are concerned about the nitrates and you are addressing the nitrates. Again, your organic nitrogen's not going to go away. The nitrite is, is, is very minimal. But if you don't reduce the ammonia and convert it to nitrates, you cannot denitrify. And it is very bothersome how we talk about septic tanks, septic tanks. The septic tank is a biological digester. It creates a bacteria that helps decompose the carbonaceous states. And then we pass that on to complete this complete cycle to get back to the, this one water solution, protecting our water sources. And even though you have a very big abundance of water, it's the protection of that water that really counts. There are many ways to approach this. It's sewer is not the answer. You keep hearing in your testimony where you have the manholes blow out. You have an earthquake that causes these things with direct discharging. You know, we do direct discharge into a lot of reservoirs and streams and fish streams and trout streams. But we're held to a different standard of making sure that we have to protect that groundwater. And where you have onsite wastewater systems, they are replenishing source to that water aquifer. So if properly treated, a lot of your situations can be taken care of. But don't rule out these different processes that help you get there, especially with the challenge that you have for the infrastructure to get it to that centralized plant. When you can have decentralized plants that mostly will help you keep that cost down. But when you do that, you use what's called the affluent liquid transfer system or force mains. And with those force mains, two inch diameter force mains or three inch diameter force mains are very, you know, cost efficient. But then you're also eliminating the other issue that you have infiltration and exfiltration. So I, I've been very astonished at the progress that you're making here. Thanks Senator Duñez for letting me participate tonight. I just really would love to, if you guys, you know, anything that we can do to help you guys understand this process, to help you get through that finish line. It, it is very important. And I started out in the eighties as a well driller. And here I am, you know, 40 years later. And I'm concerned about what we're doing to our groundwater. We're not protecting it. And the examples that you're speaking of, Hawaii and such like that. I live near the Chesapeake Bay. In Virginia, we have a big problem here. And we are addressing it very much similar to what you're doing. And there are a lot of resources here in the regulatory community that you can reach out to. And I'd be happy to give you a list of, of people that could help influence and make sure that when you write this rule, it doesn't have the smoke and mirror appendage to it that we're achieving the goal that you want to achieve, this nitrate reduction. So thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Stidham. So now we have, I believe, Bern Santos? If you can unmute yourself. How are we doing? I think you're still muted. Bern? Bern Santos? Yeah, you're still muted. Or is it Annie? I can't read from here. Bern, okay, Bern. Yeah, we still see the mute.
Hi Bern, can you hear us? Sorry, you have no audio.
Still can't hear, we still can't hear you, excuse me. Okay, is there anyone else on Zoom that we can recognize? Bern, can you hear me? If you, if you can hear me, raise your hand. Bern Santos? Are you there? Can you hear me? Oh, the video just froze. Okay. Is there anyone else on Zoom? Okay, you're unfrozen now. Bern, can you hear me? You can hear me. Okay. We are still muted at this point. The bottom left hand, I think there's a key. Let me check. On the bottom left hand of your screen, you'll see a button? It says audio. Do you see that audio button? Okay. Or, or icon with headphones? Do you see that icon? If somebody can talk her through?
Hi Bern, this is Evan from Senator Perez's office.
I wonder if she can use headphones? Do you have a pair of headphones?
Bern, would you happen to have headphones?
Yeah, that headphone, of course she's frozen and...
Yeah. So Bern can hear us, but we can't hear her, so I'm...
We're on our...
Uh, she's under the Senator Duñez's account. Yes. Hi Bern? Are you on a cell phone or are you on a laptop? Okay, Rudy's on. Bern, is your audio joined at the bottom left hand of your screen?
Yeah, we're still seeing the mute button.
Bern, go ahead and click the option of Wi-Fi or cellular data. Yes. Hi Bern, is your... Her camera's on, but she's...
He's on, Bern is on...
I'm sorry, that was me who was, I was on iPhone trying to figure out how I could help my aunt unmute herself.
I have no idea. I'm muted, oh, sorry. Who's speaking? If we can see a video of you?
Christine, right here.
Yeah, okay, you gave testimony, but we're trying to get the others. Okay. Is there anybody else on Zoom? We need to get a visual of you. Okay, no, we lost Timothy, but we will continue to try Bern.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, Dorothea, yes, you're recognized?
Thank you, Senator. I was in hopes that my older siblings would have been able to send in their written testimonies.
Sorry, excuse me, Dorothea. Oh, yes, yeah, we do accept written testimony. We're unable to do the visual of the Zoom oral testimony at this time.
Yeah, my Manamko sisters are having a hard time with the technology.
Yeah, if they accept that, we will accept that as well.
Okay, Sidoos Massey, thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your attendance and participation. Okay, at this time, I believe Senator Duñez has, he's requested to read testimony on behalf of Denise Pangolinan. Senator, you're recognized.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Chair, and this was at the request of Ms. Pangolinan. Her representation to our offices, her experience has been extremely distressing, and she wants and prefers that this be read into the record, maybe just a little bit too emotional. So Ms. Denise Pangolinan's testimony goes as such. Greetings and hafaday, Senators of the 37th Guam Legislature and Madam Speaker. Thank you for allowing us, the people of Guam, to speak here today regarding Bill 17535. Guam's inflation, in just the last year alone of 2023, has immensely risen. People of Guam in low to middle class are feeling the wrath of this situation, and it's starting to hit harder. Housing markets have skyrocketed, and while it's very hard to own a home for most low to middle-class natives on Guam, families on Guam continue to work tirelessly, while others must hold two jobs to make ends meet for the family. My family and I took out a mortgage in April of 2023 to build our home on a land in Adakau area, which was recently deeded to my husband, a disabled Army veteran. The land in Adakau was deeded by his mother, a surviving spouse of a Vietnam Army veteran. My family and I began the process with DPW permit section. We proceeded with the clearance required by different agencies, but by the time we got to G E P A, a letter of hold was given to us due to the harsh requirement set forth under 22 Gar 5101 C1B. And the only way we were able to proceed to build a home with septic tank in this location due to no available government sewer in the rural area is that if, one, our lot was a half acre, or two, or if the clause for a parental subdivision of not selling the land until after five years. Unfortunately, our lot deeded to us was only 1,544 square meters, and our deed did not have the statement that said of the parental clause moreover. My family and I were confounded, as we were not familiar with this regulation. There are more than six new homes in this neighboring area that just went up, all with septic tanks. We went back to DPW, and to our surprise, they were not even aware of this rule themselves. It is now nine months. This issue has caused us mental stress and havoc to myself, my husband, and our children's daily life, and it has continued to cause a great deal of mental stress to this very day. Senators, the bill to ban the use of septic tanks or to have such parental clause for lands, be it 500 square meters or 1,000 square meters, and not be able to build on their land in rural areas, is absurd. This is not the way to solve the issues for protecting Guam's northern aquifer system. As a matter of fact, it is also not protecting the rights of the people of Guam. The world is more innovative and modern for septic tank usage, and it is stated on the U.S. EPA website, "Do your part and be septic smart." Septic tanks are stated online as being more environmentally friendly and are used worldwide. So please, Senators, let's be in favor and support Bill 175-37 for the people's rights. I would like to thank you, Senator Chris Duñez, and most especially as Chief of Staff, Mrs. Akisha Pereda, for guiding my family and I through this tough time. Your support has comforted us, and we are so grateful for your team. Sincerely, Denise Pangolinan, Adakau, Dedido. Sidoos Massey, Madam Chair.
Sidoos Massey. Okay, I believe we have Bern Santos. If you can unmute, you're still muted. Oh, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, just if you can speak a little louder or turn up your volume.
Okay. How's the volume?
It's much better, but if it can go louder, that'd be good.
Okay, that's as loud as I can go.
Yeah, thank you, that's good.
Okay, since everybody knows me as Bern, I say good evening, and it's late over here in California. My name is Bernadita Santos, and I moved to the mainland and currently a resident of California for the past 47 years. My father Francisco passed away in 2001. Prior to his passing, my father left the will and designated my brother John as his executor. Fortunately, Judge Lamarena was able to settle and enforce our father's will through court order using Guam's subdivision laws to subdivide the property located over the aquifer. Judge Lamarena ordered it. He's using Guam's subdivision law. So we encountered extended periods of time trying to settle the probate due to claims of interest from adjoining neighbors. We went to court for that, and the encroachment by the government. That was two courts, court sessions, plus all the court sessions for probate. And we've been through a lot. And the probate, the probate and subdivision process took over nine years to settle all issues and encroachments to complete the subdivision of the property amongst 13 children in 2021. In the meantime, three of my brothers passed away before the probate closed, leaving their lots subject to another probate. From the probate settlement in 2021, I inherited my 1368-square-meter lot in order. My plan was to build a two-bedroom home, but unfortunately, I can't build, because it sits on top of the aquifer, and there's no public sewer close to the property to tie into. And it doesn't meet the half-acre lot permit requirement by EPA for installing a septic permit. According to Captain Bearden, they don't know where the half-acre requirement came Captain Bearden's request to upgrade the wastewater system in Guam several years ago using the type IV system has been a long-awaited recommendation from the only agency that disapproves the building permits for lots that are less than half-acre lots in a decedent subdivision. The filtration system he recommended is used in the United States and other countries, and is working perfectly at reducing nitrates. I mean, Mr. Demian testified about that. And I stand with Captain Bearden, the Realtors Association in Guam. I mean, they're not making money out of me. I'm paying the government property tax for something that I can't use, and I can't even sell my property, because nobody can build on it. So I'm just, I hope and pray that you guys will put your heads together and see what a nitrate system does. Do your research like I've done. It does reduce nitrate. It does up to 90% or more on other systems. The Advantech system that Captain Bearden presented, I believe that does more than So we can just look at 50%. There's other options that we can look at before we pass the bill or you guys pass the bill. I mean, you know, this is going to keep going on and on, and if we don't do nothing, nothing's going to be done. We got to get on the sewer lines that are, that need maintenance and repair. We can't worry about how much it's going to cost for these nitrate systems to be installed. It's the property owner's responsibility to install that. They have to qualify for a loan, but I don't know if you guys have a government loan, I don't know. They don't have to go through you guys. They can go through the bank, they might have savings. And like I said, I plan to go back to Guam and build a two-bedroom, but I can't. My hands are tied, because Captain Bearden is not approving it. And where the half-acre requirement came from, I don't know. Can anybody tell me that? So that's all. I mean, I think we should preserve the aquifer in Guam. You know, I don't live there, I've been gone for 47 years, but I am a property owner, and I'm paying taxes. So preserve the waters in Guam, you guys. Not everybody's going to build on the half acres. They don't have the money to do that. And if they're afraid that the nitrate system, the new nitrate system is going to go everywhere in Guam, it's not going to happen. Reality is, people can't afford it. So you got to look at those. You got to look at the whole picture and not be just one track, and just tunnel vision. You got to look at everything and listen to others, because you know what? I believe the Bible says in the, in the, in the, let me see what it says. "In the multitude of counselors, there is safety." We need everybody's input. Thank you again, and thank you, you guys, for all that you do. Thank you, Senator Duñez, Lujan, and all the co-sponsors. Thank you for your time, and just, this meeting has been long, and I know you guys are tired, and I'm tired. So I just want to thank you for allowing me to give my testimony.
Sidoos Massey, Bern, for your testimony and for sticking with it. So I think this exhaust are those that have come to testify for Bill 175-37. So I'd like to allow the sponsor to close. Oh, wait, sorry, do we want questions at this time? Do we need questions?
I can just include a couple of comments in my closing, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank Mr. Stenman particularly, and unfortunately, we had a much larger audience, particularly an additional two companies who do nitrate, build nitrate removal systems. They are going to send us extensive written testimony with regard to how viable these systems are, like what Mr. Stenman just testified to. Madam Chair, I would be remiss if I didn't express my disappointment. Many of these Manamko wanted to submit video testimony, but it was disallowed, and I really feel that that is a silencing of voices, of individuals who, like they demonstrated, have difficulty with technology, but they still wanted their face and their emotions to be seen and heard, and they were denied to submit the video testimony. And I'm extremely disappointed at the committee for that silencing. Fortunately, we had a couple of them that were capable to get in and express their feelings. Madam Chair, regardless of what our feelings may be as senators, and regardless of what we think is the right thing to do, I think it is incumbent upon us to consistently, consistently work to find solutions. The testimony was that, yes, EPA has been at the forefront, and the Guam Association of Realtors has been at the forefront. I never introduced this bill and said that it was novel and my work, but what I did say is, I was willing to introduce it, because no one else would, and no one else did. And so we're here now. Whether it's compromises that we need to work on going forward, or whatever else it is, report out the bill and let's fight it out on the floor. But we can no longer not recognize this absolute injustice between parental subdivisions and decedent subdivisions, especially since we only started treating them that way a mere four to five years ago. Many of these people that have testified are expressing that frustration. What we do going forward, you know, we'll see. I know many of us would still like to see the bill passed as is. I think... we think is the right thing to do, I think it is incumbent upon us to consistently, consistently work to find solutions. The testimony was that, yes, EPA has been at the forefront, and the Guam Association of Realtors has been at the forefront. I never introduced this bill and said that it was novel and my work, but what I did say is, I was willing to introduce it because no one else would and no one else did. And so we're here now. Whether it's compromises that we need to work on going forward or whatever else it is, report out the bill and let's fight it out on the floor. But we can no longer not recognize this absolute injustice between parental subdivisions and decedent subdivisions, especially since we only started treating them that way a mere four to five years ago. Many of these people that have testified are expressing that frustration. What we do going forward, you know, we'll see. I know many of us would still like to see the bill passed as is. I think it would be incumbent upon us to report it out as is and fight it out on the floor after we gain additional information and additional testimony, particularly from subject matter experts. I believe as we close out this session, Madam Chair, this will be one of the absolute top issues that we deal with in this legislature, given the fact that people who own their land, the government must find solutions. The government must not say it's too hard. The government must not say we can't do anything for you, or it's going to take years and years and generations in order for us to be able to get our act together. It is our job to allow people who own land to have the highest and best use of their land. We complain all the time that the federal government's got their thumb on top of our head and that we are oppressed, but yet we demonstrate that we also are capable of oppressing our own people. I think that's wrong, and I think that wrong should absolutely be righted, and we have every obligation to do so. Sidoos Masi, Madam Chair.
All right, just for the record, there was no silencing of anybody. We are, we did provide options in regards to Zoom participation as well as written testimonies. We did extend the deadline, and we will continue to accept supplemental testimonies after the deadline is up. So in no way, I just want to make this very clear, you know, we did, we were flexible with Senator Duennas in regards to ensuring that we accepted all testimonies, and we will continue to accept testimonies from those that were unable to participate today. You know, it's really critical that we have this dialogue, and, you know, we are, and I just, you know, regret that this characterization is being placed upon, you know, upon me as a chair.
Madam Chair, you denied video testimony, and my staff, as in writing-
So, excuse me, I have the floor. So, you know, I, as a chair, this is, I have the discretion to determine what is allowed. It's important that we do our due diligence, and I did comply with all laws, open government law, as well as standing rules. And so just to make that very clear, we are accepting testimony, so nobody is denied to provide their testimony regarding Bill 175-37. So on that note, we did extend the deadline for those that want to submit testimony in order to make it for the committee report. It's been extended till January 18th, 4:00 p.m. Thursday, January 18, 2024. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement Statistics Research and Planning, or it could be dropped off at the mailboxes at the Guam Congress Building, or email to So, regards to our last agenda item, Bill Number 50-37COR, we have the sponsor of the bill. Do you want me to-
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I guess about an hour or so ago, we withdrew the bill, 50-37. And the reason we did so is the American Cancer Society wanted some significant changes to the bill, which have been done. The bill will be refiled in the morning, and I'd like to thank you, ma'am, for your graciousness in allowing us to continue, I suppose, or re-notice the hearing for the 11th of January.
We would have to wait and see as far as, yeah, the referral, so there's a bunch of logistics that we have to take care of.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we will, you know, pending that, we would have to look at the logistics in regards to timelines. So it requires timelines for publication and so forth, so, yeah.
Okay, well, that I understand. Of course, we have to meet the five-day notice requirement. But, you know, we withdrew the bill based upon your representation that we could hear this on the 11th, so I want to make that for the record. And as an attorney, I would just raise an a-stoppal issue. We'll meet the five days, it's going to be filed, and we'll see everybody on the 11th.
So I just need to clarify, we need to go through the procedures. So we will try to get the hearing on the 11th if possible, but we need to meet open government law. So-
Can I say something for the record? All the people that are here today did not attend work, and I just want to make it clear, for the record, that everyone that was waiting the entire afternoon, the people of Guam had the right to be heard today because shops were closed, revenues were lost, taxation was lost, people lost hours at work. I just want to make it absolutely clear, we, the people, demand to be heard regardless. We've been here, we have the right to be heard. This is the people's house, and we want to be heard.
Okay, yes, Ms. Mediola, there is procedures. So when a senator does withdraw a bill, then it starts the process again. My apologies, right, but this is the procedures that we have to follow.
Again, thank you, I understand that, but for the record, it was a mockery of the crowd that was waiting today, and this is unexcusable move on Mr. Fisher's behalf. I'm sorry. You guys have until 9 o'clock today. It was not, it was not a move that will be appreciated by over 4,165 people who submitted their opposition to this bill, and we will make it clear publicly that today was a mockery of our people. Thank you.
So just to confirm that we do have procedures, and you will be afforded this opportunity when, yeah, when it's scheduled. So nobody, again, is being denied opportunity to speak. There is going to be opportunities to address the same topic. Are we, are we, I think we need to adjourn though, right? Do you want to talk? No?
If I may, Madam Chair, you know, I appreciate all those who were here for almost six hours waiting to testify in the measure. It's unfortunate that the author of the legislature did not notify those who were waiting out here for six hours that the plan was to withdraw the bill and have them wait this long, so I'd like to apologize to everyone who is out here today. I'm very, very sorry for that, and looking forward to another bill coming up that has to do with vaping, doesn't prohibit it or the flavor of it at all.
Ma'am, are we hearing this, are we hearing this bill right now?
Mr. Fisher, I'm speaking, Mr. Fisher. I'm speaking, Mr. Fisher.
You know, we're not hearing the bill right now, Senator.
So if you don't mind, if you don't mind, Mr. Fisher, if you don't mind. So that being said, I again apologize on behalf of the legislature that you had to wait this long when it, you could have left a lot earlier knowing that it was going to be withdrawn, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, in a sense, I have to join Senator Tied agree on that because the fact of the matter is we lost all our witnesses because this prior hearing just went on and on and on.
Senator Fisher, please.
Thank you very much.
So we will recess. So we do have a opening on the 11th. So we will recess. What is the time on that one? Is it morning? Okay, so we will recess till the 11th, but we will send out the notices. All right, so, okay, so I think at this point, we will have to adjourn, but it's our intention to get it as soon as possible, but we will notify when the public hearing is going to be, because I can't guarantee that it's going to be on the 11th, but we will try to meet that date. So at this point, this public hearing is adjourned. The time is 6:59 p.m.